Council was back in session. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment?
Well, Michael, 95 Woodbine Avenue. I've got, well, first of all, it was a good idea for the email address. I think transparency is always a good thing for government to do. To that end, though, I have some questions I think need to be answered or could we run efficient? Okay. I'll give this list to the secretary because you don't have to answer them now. But I'm sure you thought of some of these questions. I just want to make sure you have. Is there going to be a person responsible for the administration of this email account? Will there be a log of the email questions when they were assigned and when answered? Will there be a written process to be followed? Will there be a goal set on how soon emails should be answered? Who will receive the emails? Do they go to all the town council members? Anybody else? Who will determine how the email is handled? Is that an administrator's job? Who will answer the questions? Will the entire council as a group read, discuss, and answer the question? Will there be communications among the council members? Would this communication constitute a special meeting? What issues will that raise? Alternatively, will there be discussions at a subsequent meeting so members can decide on the best response? Will the minority party be able to have a dissenting opinion? Will the town staff be involved? Will there be need for legal opinions? How will the author of the email receive the response in an email? Will there be a place for public to review all the questions and the responses? So the duplicate questions won't have to be answered again. Will the questions and responses be read at town meeting as correspondence? If the person who asked the question is at the town council meeting, and they have a follow-up question, will they be allowed to ask that follow-up question? I'm sure you thought of a bunch of these questions. I think they need to be looked at. I think a policy needs to be written so people can understand exactly what should happen when emails are written. I noticed on the agenda, you got a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Catherine Camerow, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. Unfortunately, the council wasted taxpayer dollars on attorney Jessel's opinion given last week on the change to ordinance section 310, when he should have consulted an unbiased attorney. I prepared a lot of comments that I was going to make that show that there's still an issue. However, I found out today that there is a recording of the subcommittee meeting and the public hearing. What I had originally asked for from the town manager's office, I was looking for the video, and I was told there's no video, but no one bothered to tell me that there was audio. So I'm only finding out about this today, and it's on a micro cassette. So either the town manager's office or myself need to get a playback machine. So therefore, the comments that I'm going to make, I'm going to reserve for the next meeting until I've listened to the tapes to be sure of what I recall of the meetings before I make any further comment and look into this any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the council? Public comment is closed, and we'll move on to the agenda. Under the minutes.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 21st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please say aye. Is there anyone abstaining? All those opposed? Minutes are approved unanimously.
I move to approve the special town meeting minutes of September 21st, 2020.
And a second, please.
Second.
Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved unanimously. Comments from the chair. Let's start with a committee report, if you would, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited to announce that the Watertown Police Department will be starting up the Police K-9 program once again. The department has been without an active K-9 team for four years. The department has purchased a German Shepherd Patrol dog from K-9 Services in Bethany, Connecticut through a generous $8,000 donation from an undisclosed Watertown resident. The dog will be received after New Year and will be named Fran in memory of the donor's mother. Officer Robert Fortier has been selected as Fran's handler. Officer Fortier is a 12-year veteran of the police department, has served as field training officer, and is a member of the department's honor guard. Officer Fortier is also recipient of several department awards and accommodations. Officer Fortier and Fran will be attending the Connecticut State Police K-9 Training Academy in Meriden for several months during the spring of 2021. In my own comment, you can't put a price tag on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe any of the other committees have met recently, so there are no other committee reports. Under correspondence, we have a resignation from Robert Porter as a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals, a resignation from Ken Demers as a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals, and a resignation from Mark Remo as a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee. And we had two emails come into the new email address that we set up. One was from Margarita Christie with regard to the radio frequency that she talked to us about at the last council meeting. The document was over 50 pages. So we have made it available for anyone that would like to look at it online, but we have not printed it for every single person. Obviously, it's for our educational purposes so that we are aware of the issues she's bringing before us. The second one was from, if I say his name right, John Goldbaleski. He had two issues. One was with regard to road conditions, which were referring to Public Works. And the other was with regard to the police department, which I'm going to ask our town manager to address at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I reached out to Mr. Goldbaleski after reviewing his email, and it seems he was under the impression that all of the certified police officers that we hire are retirees and collecting pensions from other towns. And I explained to him that the majority, or effectively almost all of the certified officers we hire, and many are originally from Watertown that happened to join other agencies, only had two or three years on the job, and they're not collecting pensions. In light of that, I said, even if they were, it's really frankly not in my business if someone works somewhere collecting a pension. So he understood that, and he was very relieved that that wasn't happening. He said, reading it in the paper, he just thought they came from another agency. They were getting a pension and then working here. So he was very satisfied with that. And I told him, another reason we hire certified officers, we save a tremendous amount of money in training. So he was relieved, and we had a very nice conversation.
Very good. We'll move on now to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I want to recognize our deputy fire chief, Jim Demarest. Jim worked very diligently obtaining a grant, a safer grant for the fire department in the amount of $130,000. This is a no-match grant, so it isn't costing the taxpayers anything. It's going to be used for training of firefighters, for outfitting the junior fire corps, sending our firefighters to courses of firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT, as well as officer one. These three-month courses cost the taxpayers $1,200 apiece, and now we'll be able to utilize this grant. It is over a four-year period, but it's going to be a real advantage to our fire department because of Deputy Chief's efforts. And I thought I saw him here tonight. There he is, Jim. Great job. That's what we love, grant money. On another note, Golden Property Brokers viewed both the annex and the town hall last week. They're preparing to begin aggressively marketing those properties. Since their visit, we've had three showings at the annex and one at the town hall. I'm not sure what, how interested those people are, but there was three. There's one tomorrow. There was three showings at the annex, and there's going to be one more tomorrow. That'll make it four, and one at the town hall. One of the challenges I think they're going to face with marketing the town hall is the parking issue. Parking is very limited. We're going to look into the possibility of perhaps adding some parking on the east side of the building, if that's possible, I'm not sure. And also, we should keep in mind that the Munson House property may have some available parking spaces. So that might be an alternative to consider, but there is going to be an issue with parking at the town hall. In addition, our building official has resigned effective October 16th. We've been able to get another person to fill in until we can fill that position. We have an individual from another town that's going to work for us on a part-time basis till we can fill the building official's position. We're doing some milling and paving in the Eddie Portland Cobb Street area right now, and that's been ongoing for several days. Now, on another note, we received some very encouraging financial news last week, and I'm going to ask our finance director to share that information with all of you. So.
Hi, everybody. We recently went through a bond rating with S&amp;P last week, and we once again got a double A-plus rating with a very strong outlook. A lot of this was caused because of, we have restored the fund balance over the last two fiscal years. We're in much better shape there. This is also due to strong tax collections, strong economic growth, strong management within the finance department and policies, and with an adequate budgeting performance with an operating surplus in the general fund for both 2019 and 2020. So bottom line is the town is now rated at a double A+, which is, I'm very strong for Connecticut municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, and thank you for your effort, Sue.
Thank you.
We'll move on at this point to new business, appointments to boards and commissions.
I move to reappoint Luigi Cavallo Jr., 97 Joshua Town Road, Watertown, as a regular member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire January 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Any comments? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye. Is there anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? The motion for Luigi Cavallo passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Mr. Scott Tierman, 259 Bayview Circle, Watertown, Connecticut, as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission to fill the unexpired term of Pierre Morin, who has become a regular member. This appointment is to correct a motion previously made to appoint Mr. Tierman as a regular member, as he is an alternate member.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, well, I should ask you if you have any questions or comments. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? Mr. Tierman's appointment is unanimous.
I move to appoint Robert Redelick as member of the Ethics Subcommittee of the Town Council to replace Kathleen Remo.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Are there any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion to appoint Mr. Attent to the Ethics Committee is unanimous.
I move to approve the employment agreement between Mark Remo and the town of Watertown for the position of town manager effective November 2nd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? The motion to appoint Mark Remo is unanimous. Mark, you want to come up and sign it according to our attorney, this is when we do. You sign that or not? Oh, it's not. It's gone. That's what I'm hearing, that's what I started thinking. That'd be my comment. Thank you. Congratulations. Item G on the agenda.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $7,245 for police overtime. Funds have been received from the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation for DUI enforcement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Is anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion is passed unanimously.
I move to approve a bid waiver for treated salt for winter operations performed by Public Works Department to be purchased off the state of Connecticut Department of Administration Services list for $10.44 per ton with a minimum commitment of 1,250 tons.
We need a second.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
Can we have for the record a very brief explanation of this? Or is this something we do every year? Is that right? The minimum of 1,250?
Yeah. I assume it's right.
Right, yeah, the director of Public Works. Every year we buy treated, every year we buy regular salt of the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services bit. We've been doing this over 20 years. The treated portion of the salt that we're looking for is an additive to the regular salt. What it does is it knocks the temperature that the salt is effective down from 20s to the mid-teens. So it's more effective over a range of temperatures as opposed to straight salts, which doesn't go down nearly as far so that we can more effectively treat the road in cold weathers. In addition, the other benefits are there's an anti-corrosion compound, which protects our trucks, and we get less bouncer scattered. So the salt and the sand mix tend to stay in place better than the straight salt, which can't bounce off of it. So we feel that it's advantageous for public safety to be doing so. We've been using this particular product for a number of years now. It's just not covered under the DAS contract, which is why we look for a bid waiver for the additional funds every year.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion is approved unanimously.
I move to postpone action on item 9F, approval of job description modifications.
This is to allow input from our new town manager rather than just the council. It's appropriate the town to just be done after our new town manager is in place.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor of tabling the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the commitment of funds for the Steelbrook Greenway completion project under the Connecticut Department of Transportation Alternative Grant for the town's portion in the amount of up to $533,000 over three fiscal years, subject to approval at a future town meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
A brief explanation of this.
Right.
About a year and a half ago, the Department of Public Works in conjunction with the Department of Parking Recreation submitted to the local council governments a transportation alternatives project for the development of the Steelbrook Greenway. In our case, would be the continuation of the previous efforts. These funds are being coming through the Federal Highway Administration to the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation as recommended by the Nogga Valley Council Governments and as approved by the Greater New Haven Metropolitan Planning Organization. The application was one of two successful applications in the western part of the state of Connecticut. The DOT representative consultants recently contacted the town and wanted to know if we were still interested in pursuing it, given the changing conditions in the state of Connecticut. At this point, they're looking for a verbal commitment. They need to have the funds obligated or for their procedural purposes by October 30th. The project itself is an 80-20 grant. 80% will be reimbursed by the state of Connecticut, and the other 20% comes out of the town share. The project is a reimbursement project as opposed to lots of, so we would have to spend the money and get it back under the terms and conditions of the obligation. So the project itself has been in the planning stages for the Greenway for almost 15 years now. So this portion of it in the center part of the town of Watertown would connect the existing pedestrian bridge, which we put in a couple of years ago, up to French Street, a new pedestrian bridge going on the former railroad right away there. It would go up to French Street. There'd be a trailhead constructed, a quarter, a couple of rectangular flashing beacons to be installed on French Street. The trail itself would be paved, and there are four property acquisitions that are envisioned as part of the project. So the project itself, the property acquisitions would be eligible for disbursement of funds under the town of the open space funds for the town of Connecticut, which is our, or rather, the town of Watertown, which is how we're proposing to pay for it. So the project itself has to be completed in three years. We think that's very feasible, doable after the conversation we had with the representatives of the state today. So it will be spread out over three years because there are significant design and permitting efforts involved. So to figure itself is like $533,000, which you tell to be on the hook for.
The chair, I just want to make sure I understand this. This total grant and the town share, is it going to go all the way from, if you look at the map, from the green on the right all the way to match up with the green on the left? Beated, or is there still other parts that?
No, essentially, it's going to cover the red portion of the map. The rest of the portion is, the green portion you're referring to is a stone dust trail. Should there be sufficient funds available, and should the park or rec commission recommend that the public approve it, we would envision paving the rest of the trail down to the bridge and make it 100% ADA compliant. But right now, that portion is, technically, it's not ADA compliant, but in reality, it is. But that would be in that alternate depending on the funding and how the prices come in. The budget itself was established by the representative, the consultant here, and it's got a very healthy contingency fund in there at that point. So we think we have a more than sufficient funds at this time.
Anyone else? Yes.
I have one question from the email. It's on page two, the email from Sarah Wazowski. I think this is what you just covered, but she said that the town should confirm that they will secure the additional local match for the higher estimated cost prior to the project advancing.
Right, the figure before the town council does include that figure. It also includes some additional consulting, engineering, and design fees because the consultant felt that there may be more efforts involved than the town staff can handle at this time, given the 2019 Public Works Bond, which we're also likely to be involved in getting. So this is kind of an upside not to exceed cost. We'll know the exact cost once the final design and bids come in, of course. There was a discussion today with the state and their consultants with regard to potential cost overruns. They didn't seem to feel it was a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
I move to authorize the owner of 345 Buckingham Street, Oakville, Frank Biallo and Sons LLC be permitted to utilize a portion of an unimproved Paper Street, Naples Street, for driveway access to the property in terms to be agreed upon between the property owner, the town attorney, and the public works director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have questions?
Through the chair. I have a question. Why are these, the adjacent properties crossed out on this map? Because it's this property that's the one we're talking about? Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $354 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion is approved unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
We need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion is passed unanimously.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.